Thanks for talking.
Ah, you're so smart.
Good to go. You guys ready?
Yeah, thanks, Michael.
Morning, everybody. I want to welcome everybody this morning. We've got a little bit different agenda this morning. Um, we've got Daryl Sellers here this morning from Church Nazarene, Washington. Come up, Daryl, to the podium. Morning.
Good morning. Uh, I want to say first off, thank you for the opportunity, um, to open up this first meeting of 2022 in prayer. Um, it touches me as a minister and his word to know that we live in a community that allows us to happen. For, uh, the word has a lot to say about public prayer, and the last thing I want to do is do it to spout out big words. Um, the only thing that I've got big in myself is barbecue. No big words here. I'm a simple man, but I want to make sure that any prayer that we start off with is always grounded in his word. Many of us know the passage from Second Chronicles where causes that says if my people who are called by my main name would humble themselves and seek me, then he will heal their land and forgive their sins. But a lot of people forget the context in which that was. They were facing trials and tribulations brought on by their own mistakes. They were in judgment. But it it gives me great hope that even if we're in judgment of God Almighty, we can still seek him and shorten that judgment. Uh, my prayer for those that are here, those elected officials that are looking to lead our community, our, uh, county and our city into new directions, comes from a scripture out of Titus one, seven through eight. Since when overseer manages God's household, he must be blameless, not overbearing, not quick tempered, not given to drunkenness, not violent, not pursuing dishonest gain. Rather, he must be hospitable, one who loves that is good, one who is self-controlled, upright, holy, and disciplined. That's my prayer for myself as I leave my congregation and the many pastors in this area, but it's also my prayer for those political leaders that do the same thing, that we are people above reproach and we are those that love his will. And so that's how, that's the direction of my prayer for you, for myself, for my family, and for the folks of Washington and Davis County. Let us pray. Father, I thank you so much just for the opportunity we have to come into your spirit and into your home. We understand that the God's house is not a brick building. It's not a building with a cross on the front. It can be a building that is filled with your people that have you inside their hearts. Lord, it is our prayer that we come to you humbly as we look to seek your will. Help us and give us confidence and courage to seek your will as we make decisions for this community. Lord, I ask for an anointing over every leader that is present today and every person who's looking to speak today, that they are feel your spirit in some way, some shape, and somehow today. May they be people above reproach. Maybe they be blameless. Maybe, may they be hospitable and people who love that is good and self-controlled, holy, and disciplined. And may we seek your will above our own. Give us the wisdom of Solomon, the patience of Job, or give us the ambition of Paul. May us do your will and may us do, may, may we do it as quickly as you seem fit. It's in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daryl. All right, we'll go ahead and call to the order of the annual drainage board for Davis County. And the only item on the agenda this morning would be, uh, elections of officers. Do you have any say on how you want the officers this year?
Um.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm up for, I'm up for whatever. I mean, if you're willing to serve, uh, as, as president, I'll serve as vice and ever on as secretary, but I'm, I'm open for whatever.
Is that your motion?
If there's no discussion, sure.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart, second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any other discussion on the annual drainage board? Hasn't been named for drainage board? Anybody in the audience? If not, look for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead and call the order of the annual board of finance for Davis County. Same thing on the first line of, of the app for annual elections of officers.
Uh, same slate?
Same slate as
Keep it easy for Patty.
So that'd be, uh, Michael Taylor's president, Nathan Gabhart is vice president, and Ron Arnold is secretary.
Yep, still moved.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart, second, second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We do have business. Uh, you got Jamie Chapman here this morning. Morning, Jamie.
Looking for Elaine. It's been a while.
Good morning. Um, report to the board of finances required by statute. Um, during two thousand twenty-one, the investments were offered to all the financial institutions in the county which were listed as public depositories in this, by the state, and the highest bids were accepted for First Federal Savings Bank and Springs Valley Bank. Uh, all the investment instruments were CDs, certificates of deposit, of course, and copies of all bid memorandum are in files in both the treasurer and auditor, and the copies are given to the other departments when the funds were involving theirs, such as highway recorder. And the regular deposit checking account was maintained at German American along with an account at First Financial. And then I think you guys have a list of the interest earned for twenty twenty-one. And then the investment policy, which remains the same, also is twenty twenty-one. Of course, you can see they're low. Yeah. Point zero point four five, uh, which we held that rate at First Federal. Eric Lane with the recorder, but it did go down a little and we're hope to see better year. That's what I think I said last year. We're just, I mean, other than that, um, Old National and Home Building, they, they're, they usually don't bid. They just, they, they've got, the banks have money.
Yep.
High firm stimulus bringing in, but they, they just don't need it to.
Do you gentlemen have any more questions for Jamie?
I did. I don't think.
Interest is pretty sad.
Yeah, it's really sad.
I did have a printout here. Um, I don't know if you guys want it. It goes back ten years. Do you want to see the graph?
Yeah, it'd be fine.
Okay, great.
Bless you.
Got pretty big for a while, but we're right back down.
I know. Any questions or?
Yeah, anything for Jamie this morning?
No.
Nope. All right. Thanks, Jamie.
Hi, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, look for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
And a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Michael, do we need, um, motion to keep the investment policy the same for twenty twenty-two?
Okay. Guess we'll reopen the, reopen the, uh, Davis County.
You're too quick.
Board of Commissioners.
We change the slate of officers.
Was that?
We change the slate of officers.
Yeah, we're, we're good to go, right? Trying to get ahead of myself.
Or we, we reopen?
Reopen the, uh, Davis Bo, Davis County Board of Finance.
I'll make a motion to keep the investment policy as is.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold. All in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to either motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, David, open the Davis, Davis County Board of Commissioners, and open it to, for twenty twenty-two.
I'd make the recommendation we keep it the same.
Get the officers the same as what we done on the last two current boards?
Yes.
I got a motion by Ron Arnold for the op, for the election of officers for commissioners to be Michael Taylor's president, Nathan Gabhart is vice president, and Ron Arnold is secretary.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Ron Arnold, second by Nathan Gabhart, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, you guys have, have you filled out your annual conflict ventures and nepotism forms? You guys have, just give those to Patty at the end of the meeting.
Oh, yeah, last time, yeah.
You got it last time, okay. I gave you mine this morning, Patty, so you should have it. I think, yeah, I did. All right, annual appointments. The only one I didn't see on this list, which we need to put on there, would be the, uh, EMA director. Correct? Is that right?
Correct. We did not make that update from last year.
So on our annual appointments, we have the county attorney, IT director, courthouse maintenance supervisor, veterans office, highway department supervisor, wage majors, any AMA director. Um, does anybody have any questions or changes for any of those appointments for commissioners for twenty twenty-two?
I'm, I'm a little confused that we did a contract last meeting for the county attorney, so why would he be appointed now unless we did that?
It's for the, it's for the county attorney's position. And so we still got, there's still an annual appointment. We got to, uh,
Even though we have him under contract. And then as it relates to that contract, I'd just like to say there's not enough money in the budget, and I guess there'll be a request to
To the council to, to bring it, bring it back to?
Okay, and then one other thing, I've looked at other contracts, and it's our discretion whether that includes benefits or not. His contract does not mention benefits. If we intend to give him benefits, I think he needs to amend the contract to say so.
Okay. We can look into that. Yep, definitely. Any other questions or changes for the appointments for commissioners?
I'll make a motion to approve all annual appointments as stated.
And leave the same boys in their positions, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, stay.
I got.
Make a motion for Chris.
For Chris jumps out, jumps out. Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, meeting minutes from December twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one. Do you gentlemen have a chance to look those over? Any corrections or changes?
I, I did not see any changes. No, I'd make a motion to approve.
I got a motion by Nathan Gabhart for approval.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Chris, if you want to come up, we'll go ahead and, we got the end award for the twenty twenty-two asphalt bids. Did you, have you had a chance to review all those, Chris?
Yeah, is that for the, the Lindell Road project?
What's that?
Awarding that bid for the Lindell Road project, PCMG.
Yes, I'm, I'm assuming that's what that is, yeah.
Yeah, we had went through, uh, we had got three bids, and I went through all the bids and, uh, uh, milestone contractors, they were the low bid, one million eighty-six thousand, twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. And, and, uh, I think they meet all the criteria and they had everything in their bid packet, and we awarded them the bid to proceed with the job.
Also had a little bid on it. Do you gentlemen have any questions on that?
Wouldn't, is that a twenty-two construction season?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, once we award it, then we would, I would get together with them and get the actual date, but it, it would be this year.
Okay, I don't have any other questions.
If not, look for a motion to approve milestones, low bid.
Still moved.
That motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and under the highway part, uh, I guess I didn't think about it being the first meeting of the year. I should have brought a bunch of professional scheduling what we plan on doing, but, but we are right now, after we got the year end done, well, we're working on our, our new construction uh, goals that we want to put a plan together and, and get with you guys and get it approved and see what roads we want to, I guess, improve and, and we're looking at some of our equipment and other things, just kind of got done with year end, and now we're going to try to get ramped up for the, the new year and, uh, probably be working on snow, I guess. Uh, I did have one other thing on the, the public notice on the highway meeting that we had, uh, tw, we'd have it twice a month before this meeting, and we had decided just to have it once a month with your guys' approval at the last meeting, and I think in the minutes it does say it was on the second Tuesday of the month, and it was already advertised as the fourth Tuesday of the month, which would have been the second meeting, and I don't think anybody had any problem with doing that, so.
Yeah, I think we just need to clarify when we're gonna have our
Clarify it that it's on the, the fourth Tuesday of the month.
I think the fourth Tuesday, we're up, but after we had, I've had time to think about it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of our solid waste and RDC meetings are always on the first Tuesday of the month. So it'll, that'll help alleviate some of that too, so.
Yeah.
I think we need to make her, just re, redo our motion here to make it the, uh, annual, or the meetings at the highway department on the fourth Tuesday of the month instead of the second Tuesday.
Seven thirty a.m.
Seven thirty a.m., so I'd like to see a motion for, uh, the highway meetings to be at seven thirty on the fourth Tuesdays of the month.
And you'll have coffee ready by seven thirty?
Yes.
That part in the motion.
I guess.
I, I'll just, I just entertain, I'm, I'll make the motion to have the fourth Tuesday of every month.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And for the record, that has been advertised that way, so that part is in.
Done, yeah.
So other than that, I don't really have anything.
Okay, uh, you guys have anything else for Chris this morning?
No, we dodged, dodged a bullet this weekend, so that was good.
Yeah, we, we did send some trucks out there Saturday night.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, with the overpasses.
Yeah.
Concrete structures and overpasses.
Got slick, yeah.
Got slick. Uh, down temperature usually keeps the pavement warm, but where the, like, the I sixty-nine overpasses were pretty bad. So we had three guys working Saturday, uh, to salt and sand them.
I appreciate your, everything you guys do. I know everybody complains when everything snows, but you guys do an excellent job. I got stuck in Nashville, Tennessee for four and a half hours with four inches of snow, which shouldn't have happened, but
Yeah.
Truck sliding off and everything else, and they just, they don't know how to move the snow down there, and it was a mess, but appreciate everything you guys do out there, especially in the winter time, when the roads get bad condition, you guys are able to keep the roads open, people moving, so.
Well, that's, that's our goal, is, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
All easy.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chris. All right, N dot Grant, Lindell Project, I just seen a, we didn't need to sign something on that still or something? It was just some emails going back forth about signatures or something.
I think those are those electronic signatures.
Yeah.
That we did.
I think we already, I think everybody's got them signed, yeah.
Did we all three have to sign?
You got, you got signed too, didn't you?
I don't think, required three, did it?
I thought it was just Mike.
I think it was just.
Just two. Oh, you should have had one too.
Yeah, I did get one. Maybe it was just the vice president. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Being one from one.
That was just for informational on that, I think. Could we get S I D C, owner occupied housing rehabilitation, Jenny, uh, Derek Wester, good morning.
Um, I'll give you
Thank you. Sure, thank you. Your bid's right there?
Yep.
Okay, so let's see here.
Does, do you need to call a public meeting to order or anything? Hey.
So what we've got here is S I D C's housing rehab bids, is that correct? Okay. And we're anticipating three bids or two bids, you know?
We're hell of a bid thing, letters. And so, um,
Okay.
Okay.
Two bids in.
Right now, um, we have a bidding out nine houses.
Okay.
First one I have here is from Katie Minden Hall Carpentry in Bloomfield. Is anyone from that company here? We're gonna have for each of the houses, is that right?
Yeah, okay.
The total.
Sure. Okay, for six, six, five, nine, South Main Street? Okay. I'll do that. Number project, got it. For house number DC dash twenty-one dash one oh one, forty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh two, thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh three, sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh four, that's eighty thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh five, eighteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh six, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh seven, eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Dash twenty-one dash one oh eight, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-eight dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh nine, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. Everything for Katie Minden Hall. As you all know, and just for the audience, typically we review the bids as of the date that they're supposed to be opened, and we'll have someone review them and make a recommendation relative to our venues. Okay, we have second company here, Brock Anderson Construction. And it looks like we did only get two. Is that correct? Okay. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh one, thirty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. For DC twenty-one, excuse me, DC dash twenty-one dash one oh two, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. House number DC dash twenty-one dash one oh three, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh five. One oh five or one oh four? They don't want a four? So it goes from one oh one, one oh two, one oh three, one oh five. Maybe it's somewhere in the back here. DC dash twenty-one dash one oh five, sixteen thousand, eight hundred dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh six, nineteen thousand dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh seven, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh eight, twenty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. For DC dash twenty-one dash one oh nine, thirty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. And where's that Brock Anderson from? It's in here, we'll, we'll, we'll locate it. You're gonna review the, take them under. Has any?
Do I have it done?
Are these bids, uh, individual bids for each one of these projects?
Yes.
Okay.
This will look at each one.
Okay.
I'm making motion to table for review?
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart to table.
Second.
Second. All, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks a lot. Have a good day. All right, we got the health department, baby and meat tobacco free program. Mallory, sports and tripper, morning. Doing good.
Mallory.
I do with the contract.
Yes, I got it here.
So, um, we have to go through the process every year to get this signed, um, by a commissioner, um, for the baby and meat tobacco free program. So this is, we're starting our sixth year for the program now, so, um, do you guys have any specific questions about what we do with that or, um, how we operate it?
No, I think it's a good program.
Maybe it's a high level cursory overview.
Just overview real quick.
How many people are involved and?
Yeah, so, um, typically, um, how, how it works is we, um, get referrals from, um, outside agencies like, um, it's not the Pregnancy Care Center, it's First Choice Solutions. They recently changed their name, and that's where we get most of our referrals. So they'll referral, uh, refer pregnant women to us, and they have to be, um, pregnant and a tobacco user. And, um, they'll come to us and I meet with them four times before their baby's born and in hopes to get them to quit smoking. And if they are successful, they get rewarded with diaper vouchers that they can, um, use at Walmart stores, and they, they can use those for wipes and diapers and, um, for any brand or size, which is really nice. So they're worth twenty-five dollars apiece, so. And we utilize, um, grant funding from the state for this program, and we're actually, our numbers have dropped due to COVID and all of that, so, um, we're trying to, um, we're in hopes this year to try to get our numbers back up with all of that, but, um, so we don't need as much of like the supplies and stuff this year, because I'm, I'm pretty good on all that, but we do have to get retrained. So, um, I have the budget attached, so that's what this year, basically our funding is going to go to training our facilitators, so. Okay, any other questions?
More questions? On your signature page back there, it just says Davis County Health Department, or County Agency, you just want the commissioner to sign that.
Yeah, yeah, we just need one of you guys to sign that for us, please.
You guys have any more questions for Mallory?
No, I don't think.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good program.
Thank you.
Look for a motion to approve the, uh, uh, yeah. Davis County Baby and Meat Tobacco Free Program contract.
Still moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arnold, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. You got the Davis County Corner Perpetuation, can't even say it.
Perpetuation?
Perpetuation, there we go, sorry about that, um, Sean, you want to come up and speak on that, or? Some of your emails went around a little bit on that.
I, you know, all the commissioners, I was putting together and was doing what the county attorney and Patty on how to do it. Got twenty-five square miles of corners lumped in, it will be roughly, roughly fifty six new corners, fit the existing corners by by five mile grid, that lays immediately south of what we did in twenty nineteen, and from the county line over, uh, Boggs Lake area, Bemir Township.
Sean, why this particular area?
It's contiguous with what we did last time, and it's, uh, an area of the most void of corners. And we, I usually have more conflict in that area between surveyors and landowners and stuff like that, so I kind of picked it and I got a game plan going south off of it, you start getting over to the west, there's a lot more corners that are already there, so. What we're going to do is fifty-six corners that are going to have to be placed by surveyor reference state plane coordinates put on them, and then the other fifty are existing county corners, going to put a state plane coordinate on them, so.
Replace them, yeah.
So, once the state plane coordinates are on them, one gets disturbed, it took out, it's just a lot easier to put it back in.
Right.
Corner references are great, but they don't usually last four or five years, with all the county road projects, stuff like that, and since they're getting moved back, losing a lot of my references.
Is all these, is every one of these cornerstones in an intersection somewhere usually, or not?
A majority of them are in county roads, but there's quite a few that are in farm fields.
Fields and around the edge of the field or whatever, yeah.
And with, with the farming and stuff like that, they just get took out, Pike County's has about the same program going, and it's, I think it's very, very useful, it's a lot easier to find corners that are there, if you have a coordinate on it, so.
So, if you got a missing cornerstone, is it pretty hard to find a spot to get the thing back, or?
What was that?
Say, say you try to find that cornerstone, it's not there, you got to replace it. Is it pretty difficult to get that thing back where it needs to be, or what?
Yeah, it i- it is.
Yeah.
The corner perpetuation, it, it does save surveyors a lot of time if you're in a perpetuated area.
Yeah, just use that, so once you replace a new stone, is that GPS back in there, and then you can find it easier, or?
Yeah, put a state plane in the N O S coordinate.
Hey.
So, I sent out.
So if a farmer in Northern Davies accidentally kills one of them.
Yakes it out of there.
Yeah, put it back in. And they're usually targets, my little triangular signs are usually targets for farmers. I sent out three bids. One local, actually two local companies, and you got them there, so.
Okay, so, um, normally we don't do this, but I know you wanted, you were interested in bidding on it, and, uh, it is a bid for services for corner perpetuation. Perpetuation, landmark, the first one?
The fee to complete that project is sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Ed Hart Land Survey, total cost sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Providence, is anyone here from Providence? Some hourly rates in here, but lump sum amount is ninety-two thousand, three hundred dollars. Be at the auditor's office for review, and if you have any questions, looking it over, again, this is not something that needs to be bid, but I believe that that was the, that was the goal in doing this, and, uh, allow the commissioners to do that, take them under advisement, make a decision, whatever they.
Yeah, take them under advisement, yeah, look for a motion to take the, uh, cornerstone perpetuation, uh, under advisement.
So moved.
Bids, uh, uh, motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arl, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. You got the, uh, National Opioid Settlement, I know Patty's been dealing with this a lot.
Um, so this is just to formally let you know that, um, I did respond to the requirements, um, we, in the last meeting, we were going to have Michael sign, but the email came to the auditor of the county, so the auditor had to sign those documents, basically, it says Davis County has not hired outside council, council, and may be interested in sharing the state settlement for the statute, and we have registered accordingly, and there was two documents that I signed, and they're on file for you.
Okay, do you have any questions on that, I just, well, I think we signed up for that two years ago or something, might have been, it's been a while. They're just ongoing. All right, I put the farm lease bids back on here, um, we had a little confusion last time when we just had the opening of farm bids of two-year, three-year contracts, wherever they were, and they all farmed, they all fall in a different sequence, we got some three-year contracts, some two-year contracts.
Yeah.
How do you, how?
Okay, I do have that, I do have that report for you, on farm lease one, that is Flat Creek Farms, it's thirty-three point three four acres in Bar Township, uh, that lease will end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and then farm lease two is Keith Grayburn Sons', um, I'm sorry, I didn't put the acreage on that, uh, but that is in Bar Township, oh, about forty acres in Bar Township, that lease ends December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two as well, and then the one we just did, farm lease three, was, uh, Summers Farm, a hundred and thirteen acres, and now that one will end in twenty twenty-three, so I think to try to achieve the goal of all of them being on the same lease, and at the end of twenty twenty-two, if we do one-year leases, that would at least line them up.
Get them back in, so, it's, I think it'd be easier for everybody, it's easier for me, I'm on my farm contracts, keep them all the same year, and everything going the same, so it's never messed up trying to figure out two-year, three-year contracts, I like to see them all two-year contract on the same year, but they all fall on the same year, so what I would propose for you guys, if we could, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, farm lease number one and two, make them a one-year contract, that'll get it back in line with the farm lease number three, and then from that point on, we could do two-year contracts on all three of them, that sounds something, something like you guys would want to do?
Well, we should.
All right, so, I guess I'll look for a motion to, uh, for December, by the end of this year, we'll make farm lease one and two a one-year contract.
So moved.
Again, motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arl, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. We got the annual gross wage report, I think we've had those for a while, have you guys had a chance to look over all those? Pretty healthy list of employees, if, uh, there's no issues with those, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Ron Arl.
I'll second.
Second by Nathan Gabhart, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we got our twenty twenty annual appointments, um, I made a mistake last time, and didn't get that approved, and I think we did have one change with David Gray, is that correct?
Yeah, I've got some people looking, it's Community Corrections Board, and it's, um, the victim position? So we've got some feelers out there, but if anyone out there in Davies County is interested in serving on the Community Corrections Board, and has been a victim of some sort of crime, is that, uh, general? Just, so, feel free to reach out, so, but, um, I know Greg Smith and, um, Diana Snyder are doing some legwork as well, so they, he's on a variety of other boards, so if you want to step down.
Okay.
But it's that victim component that's making it.
Little difficult to get, get an appointment on there.
Yeah, I just can't go make somebody do it.
Make you do it.
Sign you up for it, yes, make me a victim.
Yeah, I'll make you a victim first. Oh, boy. So I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two commissioner appointments minus the, uh, David Gray on our, uh.
Regarding one, if, if it's possible, I don't know if, uh, the spreadsheet and the information that we get is, is wonderful. Um, I know it happened to me, I think, twice, when I called my people, they said, didn't you just call me? And, um, there's these people serving on different boards, so we had two commissioners calling them at different times, because, so I don't know if there's a way to sort them by name, just throwing that out there, so when we call one person, we can just go ahead and ask them on both.
So they said on one board.
It's only, there's only two people, I think.
They just said on more than one board, you're saying, okay.
So, which is fine, but just more, Patty's giving me that look, so I was wrong.
We'll try to, we'll try to work on that for you, Nathan.
It would come, it would come light, and I would come light years, it's so much easier to do than it used to be, so I'll, I'll make a motion.
Make a motion, just, uh, taking David Gray off, uh, Community Corrections, right?
Yeah.
Okay, got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arl, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you gentlemen have anything else for commissioners?
I do.
Nope.
Have any in the audience, have anything for commissioners? If not, look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and adjournment.
So moved.
And motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arl, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries, thanks everyone, appreciate it.
See you.
See you, ladies.
See ya.